We'll start with you, Ms. Guthrie. Could you just describe the district as if you were describing it to someone who was unfamiliar, who never lived there before? What's the district like? What do people need to know?
Okay, so the district starts, a lot of people don't know this, it starts over here in 441 in Broward, in Melrose Park. It goes all the way down to Sunset Behind, public, and it goes all the way to Rock Island. So there are 13 precincts in the district. We have roughly 30,000 voters. We are very demographic, African-Americans, we have Spanish, Latinx, we have white districts, white neighborhoods, and, you know, mixed, mixed. So also, we also just got annexed into what, Riveland Village, I think it's 700 plus homes, but maybe 1,700 people. The district is very diverse, historical district, the Sistrunk area is very diverse. It's historical, they just had the open LELE Center. We are though, not the darling of Fort Lauderdale, which I hope to change. We have been not fairly represented economically. I want to say the growth of the economical growth that the rest of the districts have seen, our district have not seen, and especially in the southwest, nothing happens to the southwest. The previous, all the previous commissioners, besides Carlton, they just ignore this section of it, everything happens over in Sistrunk. And that's not to take anything away from the northwest area, however, we have to make sure that when we represent, we represent everyone. I'm going to be, I'm running to represent District 3, but overall, we'll be representing Fort Lauderdale. So it's not just District 3, we make up one of the districts, but it takes the whole of us to make Fort Lauderdale a great place. It is somewhat, but we need to make sure that all the residents feel the same kind of economic growth, economic development, educational resources, CRA resources, all the resources that the city has to have, we need to make up on that.
Okay. Ms. Beasley-Pitman, what Ms. Guthrie just said is really what we heard in the other interview for District 3 as well, featuring Ms. DeBeau's and Dr. Hankerson. You know, this is a long neglected district at the city level, and you know, you could say even within Broward County.
Yes, I agree.
Having identified that issue, what do you do on the City Commission to start to turn that around after decades of attempts? Or non-attempts, for that matter?
I do believe engagement and also engaging, when I mean it by engagement, and engaging the community as well as the commission. Unfortunately, and maybe I shouldn't even use the word unfortunately, we are hardworking people, and there's times that scheduling of meetings, activities that are going on, we're not necessarily aware of things that are transpiring through the city level. And that, to me, also is the reason why I miss out, because we're not necessarily present when they're doing representation. So with that, I'm the candidate who plans to bring awareness through engagement, opportunity to bring everyone in the district, both full to the table, understanding as to what's going on. Transparency is basically what I'm trying to share. And then in regards to the commission, the dais itself, I'm hoping to create a dais where we unify together, and it's not just a your district, my district, comparing it and bringing it together for the better of the whole city. Because if we are a city, you can't continue to neglect the center of the city, which is our district. We are a community of a large majority of the city that has gone neglected, and those are things that need to be addressed and resolved.
This is a somewhat crowded race, there are more crowded even in the Fort Lauderdale City Commission races, but there's four candidates. And Ms. Guthrie, if you could, if you could just sort of highlight, in a race with four candidates, why voters should go with you over the other challengers?
Okay, so I have been, okay, I'm the president of Melrose Park Homeowners Association. Melrose Park Homeowners Association, we have the largest Fulton precinct in the district. Not only do we have the largest Fulton precinct, we also have over 2,000 homes, 6,000 people. I have been engaged, I have been doing the work for the past 15 years. I am the only candidate that we have that have attended City Commission meetings, po connect to the Commissioners' meetings, advocated for the citizens. When Bobby DeBeau's was Commissioner, when we used to attend his meetings, we said, hey, the contractors in the district are not getting a fair play at this, why don't you add an extra check on the box so that if you're a local contractor, you will be able to get, you know, access to the contract? We also didn't have code on the weekends, and we have to keep the integrity and aesthetics of our neighborhoods, because that's how we preserve and gain value in our neighborhoods, and code is very important to our neighborhoods. In Barack Obama's book, he said, if the code enforcement, code isn't working in your area, your neighborhood is going to be blinded. And so we asked for, we can, you know, help, and it was given to us. I have, when we had the flood two years ago, the people did not call City Office, because when they called City Office, they were directed back to me, I was getting calls 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, people saying, Ms. Guthrie, people came to my house, what am I doing about the flooding? I already have relationships with the existing Commissioners, I have a relationship with the mayor, when we had the flooding, had to call him, tell him exactly where to bring in the pumps, you know, the pumps to clean up, because I was a conduit between like the community and the city. I know city staff, I already interacted with city staff, I know all city staff, so with me, this is a no-brainer, I've always been doing the work, and I don't see why the people would vote, because they know, they trust me, I'm engaged, I attend not just my HOA meetings, I attend other people's HOA meetings, I get involved, people call me, other HOA presidents call me when they have questions, or they need some kind of engagement or leadership, they'll reach out to me. So, you know, that's what I do, I lead, I assist, and I'm engaged with the commission already, but not on an elected basis, and on November 8th, I will be on the dais.
Okay, and Ms. Beasley-Pitman, how about you? How would you distinguish yourself from the other three candidates running in this race?
I would distinguish myself by identifying that I am the homeowners' president for historic Dorsey River Bend, I have been for the last five years. I am a president who is hands-on, I am one who's actually boots-on-the-ground, working with the community, I listen to my neighbors and I represent them as well, I have leadership skills, I too have relationships with city officials, city staff, I am on commission advisory boards, I am on the city of Fort Lauderdale PD's community, the chief community focus group, I'm a part of that community advisory board as well. And also, I would like to say that I'm the type of person who moves by, I observe and I move by passion, I recognize when things are going awry, not only in the city, the community that I live in, but overall in the district itself. I have also founded an organization called Unified Central Broward Neighborhoods Alliance, and that also consists of the homeowners' presidents, not only in our city, but in the county, who come together to mastermind and address our different municipalities to get a resolve to the issues that are going on in our communities as well. I am a retiree of the Broward County Sheriff Office, I was a civil servant for 32 years, I'm retired at this time, and I am a civil servant by nature and by heart, I love this community, and I'm working for it, and those who have witnessed me, witnessed me at work, they understand my passion, my drive, my knowledge, and what I'm able to accomplish, and what I have accomplished in the short of years that I've been the homeowners' president.
Ms. Guthrie brought up Bobby DeBeau's in her last answer, and you've just, I just asked you to distinguish yourself from the other candidates, but I wonder if you could, looking back, Bobby DeBeau's, McKinsey, all the recent City Commissioners that have held the position at District 3, if you could look at them and sort of say, what's been done right over the last several years, and what's been done wrong and needs improvement from representative, from representative of your community on the district, or on the commission? Ms. Beasley-Pitman, let's just start with you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for that question. I believe that what has been, what can be done better is communication, there has been a lack of embracement of the neighbors, awareness, bringing those issues to the people, remembering that our district, it is unique, a lot of people in this district can't even afford the internet, so when you post meetings and hearings on the internet, they don't have access to get that information. So I believe that being able to make a connection with our community in a different manner, if that means knocking on doors, if that means rallying those homeowners' presidents together, word out, to let them know that, hey, there's an important meeting tonight, we're going to discuss this matter, or even from the beginning, when the project comes to the commission, let's let everyone be aware at that time. I believe that over the years, there has been a lack of awareness, a lack of transparency, and a lack of engagement to bring the community overall together.
And Ms. Guthrie, you sort of answered this a little bit already, when you mentioned Bobby DeBeau's and how, you know, a lot of the vendors, vendors for the city were not given to local contractors, so, but nevertheless, is there anything else you wanted to add to that, as far as what's gone right, what's gone wrong, as far as previous representation of District 3?
Okay, so Carson Moore used to, we didn't have to invite Carson to our homeowners' association meetings, he was, he was the vice, he'd show up, he didn't even want to speak, he'd just sit in the room, so that I don't want to speak, I just wanted to hear what's going on. Bobby, Bobby came to our meetings, because remember, I'm up in this game, you know, in HOA, not just as a president, I was vice president before, we came when you invited him. He had a district meeting, and interestingly enough, we tried, when Bobby first got elected, to form a District 3 neighborhood committee, so what we tried to do was get all of the neighborhood presidents to come together, see what we had like, issues, what we had solutions to, and we'd come together as a team and present it to the Commissioners, which was Bobby at the time, and he nixed that, he told people not to join, so I don't know what was, that was all, because I'm about collaboration. So for what he did write, the only thing I can say is, when they brought the Walmart over here, he did include us in, into it, after they signed all the paper, because now they had to come into the neighborhood, so it did bring that in. As far as Robert McKenzie, as long as he's been the Commissioner, we've invited him to the meetings, he's never attended the meetings, we don't get emails from him, we don't get any communications from him, and what he has done wrong is he has no transparency, he doesn't, he's not a good steward of the money within the district, within the city of Fort Lauderdale, he's not a good steward of taxpayers' money, and he's also not as good stewards for the citizens, because he shows preferences and his attitude, you know, people are scared to speak to him or speak up to him. So I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be that kind of a Commissioner. I am a HOA president, I know how important it is to form corporations, to form collaborations, and to get together to get things done. As a District 3 president, we have to have neighborhoods come together, and then, you know, we are the head of the district, because we're the Commissioners, we have to go out into the neighborhoods, we have to go out in there and say what's going on, and try to make solutions, and try to make the district be on par with the rest of the district.
Ms. Beasley-Pitman, it sounds like a lot of Ms. Guthrie's answer was about, you know, lack of communication, just like you were saying, but she also said that Commissioner McKenzie had not been a good steward of taxpayer dollars. One example of that, that's been controversial recently, is the Summer Jams concert that wound up ballooning to like a half million dollars to put on this concert. What's your opinion of that? Are you familiar with that issue? And would you have done anything differently there?
Oh, I am familiar with it, of course, it is a conversation in the news and also on the street. Not an auditor, I don't know, you know, the funds that were spent, I don't know what funds have been spent on the east side. I do know this, I am a citizen of Fort Lauderdale, I enjoy the fact that an event was brought and included in our neighborhood, these are things that have been, these type of concerts, these type of events have been going on in our city on the east side for decades. So I, like I said, I'm really surprised to hear that it's been labeled as a misuse of funds, when there was an auditor that was in place, someone signed off on it, and the city paid for it. So there's a cloudy space there for me about how this all transpired, but what I would have did, what if there was something to do different, knowing the policy and procedure, going through the protocol, making sure that whoever I needed to speak to as far as a Commissioner, because I'm sure, thinking of chain of command, that there's individuals that, who I would talk to as a Commissioner directly, and not go to other people. So with that being said, I will follow the protocol to ensure that we are in compliance with the amount of funds that is allotted for such a concert.
Yeah, that seemed to be a lot of the pushback I could get from other city Commissioners, was that you're looking at not just the expenditure of the funds, but an expenditure of the funds that caught a lot of other city Commissioners flat-footed, you know, that they had no idea that all this money was being spent on this until after it was already a done deal.
The other issue is that...
And just saying to that...
Hold on, Susanna, Ms. Beasley-Pitman, you had one additional thought on that?
Just an additional thought, transparency, this commission as a whole, everything that comes before them, as what I've witnessed, when I go to commission meetings, when I view them on the live stream, there's a protocol that they go through, and they vote and agree as to what is, they agree to have the event, and I can't imagine not being totally aware of what you're voting for.
Susanna, on that point, and if you have any other questions for the candidates, I wanted to turn the floor over to you.
Okay, so the commission did not vote on that, number one, and number two, the other issue is what was allegedly happening, was the Commissioner, his office was directing staff, and that is not allowed. So, the city manager told me that he has three new Commissioners coming on board in November, and he's concerned, because of what happened with Summer Jams, that these new Commissioners may get the impression that they also do what was done, and lead to another 500,000 dollar concert. Do you have any response to that?
Policy and procedure, the policy and procedure that is in place, the charter that is in place, as a Commissioner, I go in and do my job, I cannot speak for anyone else, but the charter and the procedures that are in place, that's what I adhere to, that's my personal answer. I can't speak for what anyone else has done, but I do know this, I will, and when I receive this seat, take this seat, and elected into this seat, we will continue to see those type of events in our community, because this is something our community enjoys, and also they deserve, and it is a citywide event, and everyone can participate. That's my answer to you.
Thank you so much.
Can I add to that? So I am, I just, I like everybody, I like community events, I'm not against any kind of community event. What we have to look at is Commissioners are not supposed to direct these events, it goes to staff, it goes to the city manager's office, their protocols, like Mrs. Beasley-Pitman said, their protocols, and in this case, and I'm not saying he's the only one guilty of this, maybe other Commissioners, having it hasn't been brought up, I do not know. However, I was at the commission meeting when this was brought up, and I saw everyone, you know, the Parkson Rex, I forgot his name, Phil Hornberg got up, and spoke, everybody, so these, the directions came from the Commissioner and his staff, which is really not allowed, it has to go through the city manager's office, and then it goes that way, you cannot just arbitrarily just treat the money like you're having your own personal party. I would not stop these events, I'm for them, however, we have to have some kind of way to say, if you're having the event, and this goes across the board, that the cost should be at a certain amount and not go over, because listen, we have elderly folks in the city that they cannot afford air conditioning, this is a city that's hot, if you don't have ACs and elderly person, you could get a heart attack and die, just like after the hurricane in Hollywood, when those people die, you have all that money that, yes, you could still have the party, but you could put that, the resource, the financial resource into helping seniors, you know, get AC, get weatherization, the money could, you know, some of it could go to other beneficial use, you just can't take a $500,000 and put it in a party, and I'm not saying Robert's the only one that does it, like Mrs. Beasley said, it's a city event, however, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have to stay within budget, and we have to make sure that our funding is serving everyone, so you put some money in the party, you put some money in resources to help seniors, you put some into resources to assist young people to learn the trade, it's a win-win situation, but you can't just overboard it, and then you're using it, kind of like, you know, you can't use it to promote yourself, that's one of the things that happens, and it's not the first time, when I ran, the first time with Robert, and Bobby was guilty of this, they used that Sistrunk, light-up Sistrunk as a campaign event, they were on the stage saying, well, for Robert, this is a 33311, you cannot do that, that goes against charter, and we have to, as public servants, we have to set the example, we cannot just do things arbitrarily, and one of the things that bothers me is, when these things happen, it goes against charter, but nothing, there's no punishment, so if you're doing something and there's no punishment, that, nothing happens, why would you stop doing it? This is not the first time, it's been going on, this is just so much money, and for whatever reason, it was brought out, but it's not, it's not a one-off situation.
Okay, thank you. Susanna, do you have anything else? Go ahead.
Thank you both.
Okay, Ms. Guthrie, I didn't get a questionnaire from you when we sent out, and so there's a couple, there's a couple of questions on there that's kind of, I would like you to really quick answer, yes or no, if you could.
Okay.
Real quick, if you'd been on the City Commission in February, would you have voted yes or no to fire City Auditor John Herbst?
I cannot answer that, because I don't know the details of it, you know, you're asking me arbitrarily, I have to have the details, because I still don't, you know, he's running off, and, you know, I don't know the details of that firing.
Okay, and are you familiar with the One Stop Shop project?
I actually was at the commission meeting when they were speaking, in reference, you know, I saw some of it, I'm vaguely familiar with it, it's outside the district, would I have voted for it? No, because the citizens, the neighborhood didn't want it, and I don't, when I say no, it's not just a hard no, we have to figure out ways to incorporate, if we, okay, as a city, we cannot grow without development, we cannot grow, this is Fort Lauderdale, everybody wants to come here, right? So in order to facilitate everyone, you have to have developments, you have to have housing, you have to have infrastructure, all of that, you just cannot say no to everything, but you have to do it in a way where it works for everyone, you have to kind of, you know, look at each side, and then say, okay, this is the best way, you can't be hard, straight down the line, not everything is like that.
I understand.
And so sometimes, there has to be a little gear.
Okay, and also, if you had been on in July, do you know, they appointed Greg Shaveria as city manager without a public search, were you, and would you be okay with appointing him as city manager without doing a public search for the job?
I, okay, so Greg, I, because I know Greg personally, because when we had the flooding, he was my lifeline, I'm not going to even say he wasn't my lifeline, he was, he was the one that I was texting calling, I drove him crazy, but that's a hard one for me, because I know Greg, however, I am not in favor of just arbitrarily hiring folks without doing a search, I'm not in favor normally of doing that, I don't know why the commission took that step, but Greg, you know, Greg works, I like his work, so I don't know how I would have voted, I would have to have, I don't know why they didn't do a search, why didn't they do a search, I don't know, because you could, you could do a search and still hire Greg, so I think in transparency, I would have done a search.
Ms. Beasley-Pitman, your answer for that, you put, your vote would have been based on the city's policy and charter.
Yes.
Can you, can you be a little more specific of what exactly that entails?
Being that I don't necessarily know the policy and the procedure for that, I would need to do due diligence to be in that position, I don't know how I would have voted without knowing the policy, and the question is, why did the City Commission go in that direction? Were they in alignment with the charter to allow them to do that? But I would need to know, for me, charter, what the charter says, I do not know, and as far as the individual that's in the position, I do think it was a great choice, but I do believe also that there should be a transparency in allowing the citizens to know who is being chosen and placed in the position, other than just at a meeting and go, boom, the gavel is, and this is now your new appointed city manager.
Sure, and that seems to be the consensus among a lot of candidates, is that they really have no problem at all with the current city manager, but the way in which he was selected may have been somewhat...
Yeah, because you could do a search, you could do a search and still pick the best, Greg was already doing the job, he was good at it, but just, you know, by going about what the city requires, they should have done a search, I don't know if it was expedient for them to do it, maybe the previous manager quit without enough time, and it was, they did it in, for expedience, but he could have been active, he could have acted as the absence to the manager until a search was done, and then they would have, listen, the school board did it, they got the lady, they said, you know, she wasn't going to be, you know, be chosen, they did a search, they knew before they did a search, they weren't a chooser, they did a search, and when they chose her, the city could have done the same thing.
All right, we also asked on there, what single endorsement do you have for an individual organization that you would most like voters to know? Ms. Beasley-Pitman, you pointed out two of the big ones, the police and firefighters.
Yes.
So I wonder, Ms. Guthrie, do you have any particular endorsement from an individual organization that you think voters should know about?
So it's interesting, the police department endorsed Ms. Beasley-Pitman, but they didn't interview any other candidate, that's very interesting. I was interviewed by the firefighters, and no, they endorsed me last time, they didn't endorse me this time, I was endorsed recently by the Black Caucus, and, you know, that's the, you know, that's the only endorsement I have, but I took, really, really was concerned that why were the police officers, the police unions endorsed one candidate and didn't interview all candidates, that's, you know, that's interesting.
I will say that is interesting, maybe not in the way you think it is, because I've been doing interviews with, you know, candidates in races for cities across Broward County, and I have heard that same story again and again, and again, that the police union is endorsing one candidate or another, and they are not interviewing all the candidates. Ms. Beasley-Pitman, can you describe how exactly the endorsement process went with the police? Were you interviewed?
I did have an interview with them. Um, I did have an interview with them. Um, and also, I'm actively working with the police department. I am a member of the um chief um community focus group. Through my homeowners association, um, as president, we have diligently been working um front porch roll calls, we've been having um activities where we've been bringing the police into our community, trying to bridge a relationship between um neighbors and law enforcement. So we, we've, um, through efforts that I have initiated, we have been actively working, building relationship with the police. So um I can't say why they chose not to interview other people, but with the work that I've been doing, um, and the things that we have accomplished in, in the district and also within our community itself, maybe that spoke for itself. But I cannot explain, you know, the process, why um others were not invited to the interview, but there was an interview process.
Okay, thank you.
So let me, let, let, wait, wait a minute, let me add to that, because I'm also on um the police focus group. I was on there prior to Mrs. Beasley Pittman being on there, I was in the first meeting. I'm on that group, I also work diligently with police officers. We do a lot of activities in Melrose Park with the police. And um, you know, they, they bring us in for most everything. We have a very, very good relationship with the chief, with the nat team, with everybody. So the same, the same thing that she's doing as the HOA president for five years, I've been doing for fifteen years. So I don't see why they would um not interview in, in, for transparency, which since we're, we're saying we're a city, and especially the police department wants into a district such as, uh, as, as District Three, which, you know, police departments across the board has always had, you know, there was always a, a, a rough ride with, 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 with the minority districts. They should, above everybody else, have transparency and interview everyone on the ticket. I don't see why they didn't do that. Even if, even if you're on the board or you're not on the board, even if you work with the police department or you don't, you're a candidate running, um, you're gonna, if you're a city commissioner, you're gonna vote on an item that's gonna affect them, they should interview everyone.
And I, I understand, Ms. Beasley Pittman, I understand that is more a question for the police union than it is for you.
Exactly, exactly. And, and, and also to be um, to even bring, like there's, like you said, not only the police does it, there's other organizations that does the same thing, that they, they just openly endorse who they decide to endorse. And is it questioned? You know, we can't, we can't say um how they come to decide how they're gonna do and operate in the manner that they do. But they're not the only ones that, um, I've heard of other endorsements in this very race that um, that transpired, that was just a written endorsement, there was no interview.
What do you mean by that?
Um, there was, um, there's other caucuses that have gone on, that I wasn't invited to an interview, and that individuals receive endorsements. So this is not unique, it doesn't sound like anything that's not um, that hasn't, you know, it's, it's something that has occurred and maybe um a practice that is becoming more um something that we're gonna be familiar with, I don't know. But I do know that there's other candidates that have been endorsed for other items that was not a open interview to all candidates.
So, so what's different with the police is that they're a public entity, we pay them, taxpayers pay them. So it should be, so if you're talking, say, the political organization like the caucuses, because caucuses are like the political organizations, that's totally different. But with police, with fire, you, you know, with the unions, they're public entities. They're, they're, you know, the, the city managers, they hire, they have a say over what happens. So in, in, in this, you know, the, the commissioners have a say, they should be open and transparent with, with their processes.
Well, I mean, I, 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 I would, speaking as member of the editorial board, Ms. Guthrie, I would disagree with you there in that I would expect anyone who's going to make an endorsement in a race to talk, to make a good faith effort to reach out to every candidate in that race.
And, and, and I have, and, and I, I agree with you, I totally agree. I have not gone into any interview where I'm, I'm the only candidate. I've not attended anything, uh, 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 even the one last night, they forgot, they totally forgot about me. And that's not an endorsement, that was a debate. And they, they hindsighted, they said, oh, we didn't know you were in the race. And they added me at the last minute because somebody said, Miss Guthrie's not on here. So, you know, they, they, they did it because I did violate, so that's understandable. But yes, I do agree with you that anyone that's gonna endorse, your endorsement is gonna lap, um, you know, you know, any, any kind of um that validity if you're not talking to all the candidates.
Ms. Beasley Pittman, can you, can you tell me, you, in your work history, you listed, uh, we listed several positions that you, that you currently have. Um, you mentioned already in this conversation, the Dorsey Riverman Civic Association, and you're an associate, associate minister at Bethel Missionary Baptist Church. And you also said you're the, you're the founder and CEO of Unified Central Broward Neighborhood Alliance. Can you please just, 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 just give me a little detail on what exactly that nonprofit does?
Um, that nonprofit, what we are, we are um working to bring communities together, urban communities. Um, so the, um, bringing the homeowners and presidents together, addressing the issues that go before their municipalities, bringing an organization that we can bring numbers before um county commissions to breathe that voice where um times where individuals are working, you have individuals who are committed to go to those meetings and be representation for those communities and those issues. So basically being um numbers in place to address issues that are going on in different municipalities and different cities and um communities, I'm sorry.
So you mean, you mean like sort of like an umbrella organization for, for homeowners groups, that kind of thing?
Um, yes, for homeowners groups and um, say for instance, just for like, um, we have the city of Fort Lauderdale, so we have some organizations here, um, some homeowners in our area. We've reached out to the city of Oakland Park, um, we have been in conversation with um, um, organi- um, homeowners in Lauderdale and Lauderdale Lakes who are interested in, in, in grouping with us. And when those issues that come before their commission, we are doing our due diligence to represent and be a voice for that um community if they're not able to show up. So with a, 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 a membership, the goal is with our membership, um, each um membership, we want to be able to attend those meetings and have at least ten to twelve people with us. So we know that the numbers make a difference, your presence in that um, in that um commission meeting and those voices, um, those opportunities to go before the platform and, and make the, the um plea on behalf of the citizens, that's what we do. So we are um working in harmony with the communities to make a difference throughout the county.
I wanna, I wanna touch on, on, on affordable housing. Um, you, uh, Ms. Beasley Pittman, you listed this as, uh, we, we asked in the questionnaire for uh you to list the top three most important issues, and you put this as your first issue. Um, you, uh, you, you said you'd address it through how the area median income is calculated. Can you explain to voters exactly, you know, how AMI is calculated right now and how changing this uh in the way that, in the idea you have would uh, would change how affordable housing works in District Three?
Okay, overall, the AMI is based on the counties, counties rate, and also it comes through the city. However, when you do the overall analysis, it does not match up with what is being made in District Three. And because of that, the formula that's being used, we are in a position where we are um, do not have housing that's affordable. Because if you have an income with a family that's making only um twenty-six thousand a year, but yet instead you're bringing um housing that you're saying is affordable, um, that where um individuals have to pay um eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-three hundred dollars a month, and they can't afford that, yet the AMI says we should be able to. So we need to address that fact where um it is specific to District Three, where we would have that opportunity to have affordable housing. Because the formula that's being used does not meet the needs of the people in this community.
Ms. Guthrie, what about, what about affordable housing? What ideas would you have to make sure that people with ever-increasing and quickly increasing property values, that uh, that people have a chance to, to get into a home?
So with every property that's sold, the doc stamp, there's a portion of the money that goes to the state, right? It's called the trust, the housing trust fund, the trust fund. That money goes to state.
You're talking, I hear about the Sadowski, the, the Sadowski Fund?
Yes.
The Sadowski Formula Housing Improvement.
Right, so that money goes to Tallahassee, it's supposed to be only used for housing. So if that money comes back to the cities and the municipalities for housing, we wouldn't have this problem. The problem is the legislative body in Tallahassee is raiding that fund right now, and we're not getting the money back. If every property that's sold, the doc stamp that's paid to the state comes back to us, we would solve the problem. It's billions of dollars, but they're not sending it back to us.
Certainly, that, that trust fund, you know, I, I covered the legislature for a number of years, and that trust fund does get nine figures drawn out of it and thrown into general revenue, like clockwork, every year since uh, since two thousand eight or so, since the Great Recession.
Yeah, Rick Scott started that, so, so, so what happened is, they need to stop raiding that fund and send it back to the municipalities, to the counties, and it will alleviate all that burden we have with housing. Because it's, it's a matter of money, and also density, you know, a lot of people are against density. We have to find places, you know, we, we, we sell Fort Lauderdale as a sexy city, and it's a good place to, to work, eat, play, it's, you know, I was at the um, the, the, um, state of the city address, and it's beautiful. So you put that out there, and everybody wants to move here, where are they gonna live? We have to find places for these folks to live, and it has to be where we have businesses that wanna come in, and we have to educate our workforce, we have to do um, fund trades. We have to make sure everybody can't go to college, you know, you can certainly wanna go to college, but co- a lot of people that go, goes to college don't make as much money as some of the trades. So we have to encourage our young people that the trade is just as lucrative and train them. We have to train them so that when we go out and ask businesses to come into Fort Lauderdale, we say, come, we have the workers, there, we have a fully trained workforce wa- waiting on you. So come in here, and you, you know, you could get, you don't have to bring workers from everywhere else and pay them all this. You come here, you pay us fair wages, and we will work, and you come in, your business will be lucrative, and everybody will come in and live work and play here, but we're not doing that.
Okay, uh, fair enough. Um, uh, Suzanne, did you have any other, any further questions? Because we're, we're getting toward the, the top of the hour here.
I sure do, I have a question about the Elon Musk Tunnel to the Beach, which I think is supposed to cost a hundred million dollars. Want to, Ms. Pittman, can you talk about that a little bit? Do you think that's a good use of money? Do you have concerns that it may not be serving your, your district?
Oh, I do, I do not support it, I'm not in favor of it. Um, I do believe that um it's not something that definitely would not benefit um our community when you talk about District Three. Um, it's something that I'm not in favor of, I do not um, I'm not a fan of um opportunities where um private entities come in and they make um connections with our local government and, and do certain things that um, that makes it like pretty, you know? They, you wanna do something pretty, something that sounds um impressive to others. But if it's not gonna benefit, if it's not also necessarily gonna benefit the citizens overall, what is it, how does it profit our city? So this is something I, I, I personally don't uh, uh, and I'm not in favor of, no.
And Ms. Guthrie, how about you, what do you say?
So here's a problem we have, traffic. We have to alleviate the traffic, it's a lot of traffic. Um, and, and the traffic affects not just District Three, it affects everybody. It affects the living on the beach, going to, a lot of District Three workers work on the beach. They go to the beach to work, the, most of the workforce comes from us. So what are we going to do? We have the mayor like the Elon Musk tunnel, someone is saying do a train over, you know, a rail. We have to, I, I think the decisions, just like when they had the wave, everybody went to the wave, and then it was no wave anymore. We have to bring in bright minds to research, to, to, to look at the entire issue before we jump into bed with Elon Musk or anybody else. We have to do, but we cannot do nothing. There's something has to be done, we cannot just leave and say, we just don't like it and don't do anything. We have to, because we're gonna be bottlenecked, and it's not just, um, you know, District Four or Two, if everybody's gonna be in that traffic, because like I say, when you go to the beach, the workforce looks like District Three, we work over there, and we are gonna be affected by this traffic. We have to, people are talking about the east-west traffic, you have to also fix the, the north-south traffic. We have to find a way to alleviate the traffic. I'm not sure the tunnel is the answer, but I'm not sure it's not the answer either. We need to study the situation more, we can't just jump in with it. I'm not gonna say no to it, because I haven't, you know, looked at the entire issue. But we just have to make sure that we have folks that come in and tell us, okay, this is how it's gonna work. And it has to be cost efficient, it has to work for the, for the entire city for me to go for it. But I'm not gonna say a no to it, I just need more information, we need to study the issue a little bit more. But we have to, what I'm, I'm gonna emphasize, we can't just say no. If you're gonna say no, we have to fix it, we have to fix it.
Excellent, thank you so much, both of you.
All right, well, we're just about at three o'clock here. Um, I wanna, I wanna thank you both for your time and, and uh, give you both just a minute or so to, uh, if there's any issue that we did not cover, or any pitch that you would wanna make to voters to, why, but that they should consider when they go into the voting booth or fill out their mail-in ballots. I wanna give each of you a minute to do that. Um, uh, we'll just go in alphabetical order, so Ms. Beasley Pittman, we'll start with you and, and work our way down the line. Now, please, take a minute, please.
All right, thank you very much, I wanna also thank you all for this opportunity, for this interview. Um, something you did not touch on that is very important, um, the city of Fort Lauderdale is running out of cemetery burial space. Sunset Memorial is slated for twenty-twenty-five to max out, meeting, meeting its capacity. Um, there's conversations that must be had regarding it, we need to talk about um buying an additional land. Also, um, extending and offering more mausoleums, and even having a conversation about opportunities of what is called double-depth burials. These are things that would allow us to expand, opportunity for us to um give our loved ones a peace, a place of peace for resting. And also, um, just moving forward from that, I wanted to put that on the table, because no one is talking about this, and it is a serious issue. And overall, if nothing is done, the city will come to full capacity in twenty-thirty-five with no burial land for our residents. And I'm, I'm hoping, and I'm asking that the citizens of District Three, that they would come out, um, early vote, um, mail in ballot, and cast their vote for me, elect me, Pam Beasley Pittman, for the District Three Commissioner. I am the individual who's working, I'm the individual who has um connection, heart and passion, and I listen to the people. This is not something that, um, a position that I'm taking on um just because it popped up. It is something that I'm truly passionate about. Um, I, I feel that I am truly qualified for this position, because I've already been doing the work. And the quality of the work that I've done has spoken for itself. So again, November eighth, vote for me, Pam Beasley Pittman, thank you.
Okay, th- thank you. Uh, Ms. Guthrie, you have the final word.
Okay, thank you um for, you know, scheduling this again, so we missed it before. I'm Donna Guthrie, I am the person that has been working within the city, the entire city of Fort Lauderdale for the past fifteen years. I'm a HOA president, I've been on the sustainability board, I've been on the park, the board of Parkland Recreation, I'm on the citizens, I'm the chief um focus group, and I'm also on the success center of Broward County, I'm also on a board member of theirs that I'm currently serving. So there's two, um, two boards that I previously served on, and two that I'm currently on. Um, the people should, the citizens should come out and vote for me, because I have all the, I've, I've created and, and sustained um relationships that will let me do this work in a, 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 a way that it will benefit all of us. I, you know, like I say, I've um, I, you know, like I say, I've, um, already very familiar with the city staff. I've worked with both sitting commissioners on various issues. I've presented at the, uh, at the, the, the commission, I've stood there in commission meetings for two in the morning. I've done all this. I've helped my neighbors. I'm very, very, very hands-on, very active. People will tell you, I have the, I have the most active HOA in in the city of Fort Lauderdale. We do the work over here. We do all the work. Vote for me. Um, District Three has thirty thousand voters. We're asking everybody to come out and vote. We're traditionally a low-count vote voting, um, district. Come out and vote, vote for Donna Guthrie. You will get a commissioner that's gonna be active, engaged, and listen to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both very much for your time. I appreciate it. And, uh, we will, uh, hopefully have an endorsement in this race and the other Fort Lauderdale City Commission races, uh, within a, within a week or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.